I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission meeting. Why are we sounding like this? Is that be- better? Okay. I'd like to call to order these. Yeah, ready? Is that better? Okay. I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission at 7:02 PM. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Leland.
Present.
Mr. Lubak.
Present.
Mrs. Moody.
Present.
Ms. Julinski, present. Chairman DeHunt.
Yes. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the, uh, for the approval of the agenda. However, I would like to include that we do a hard stop at 9:30 this evening. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda and stop at 9:30.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support, secretary, please call.
No, no, we need to have some discussion here. I believe we should do unfinished business before we handle new business.
I was discussing with Ms. Smith prior to this, that she thought that the first public hearing in new business may go a little faster. Would you concur with that, Ms. Smith?
I would.
So. Can we poll the commission and see if we wish to take the public hearing in new business first, or should we go and move it with old business? Thoughts, Ms. Julinski?
Leave agenda as is.
Mr. Lubak?
Same.
Okay, Ms. Moody?
As is.
Okay.
Uh, the other question I have is, uh, if we keep putting a hard stop on this, we're never going to finish the unfinished business.
We'll speak quickly.
That's what I'm concerned about, is that we would run into the hard stop under unfinished business.
We're going to think positively tonight.
Yeah, but.
Okay.
You can always make another motion at 9:25 to continue the meeting.
Okay. All right, so we have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Mrs. Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Lubak.
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes, Chairman DeHunt.
Yes. We'll open the first hearing of the public. Uh, if you have anything to speak on with reference to the public hearing, item five, please hold your comments to that point, uh, if you can, and otherwise, you're free to speak on anything else. Anybody have any comments? Anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the first hearing of the public and we will move on to the approval of the minutes for July 6th, 2023.
I approve the minutes, uh, of July 6th, 2023 meeting category.
Second that.
We have motion and support, secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Mr. Lubak.
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes, Chairman DeHunt.
Yes. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing on item A under section five?
So moved.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support, secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak.
Yes.
Mrs. Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes, Chairman DeHunt.
Yes. Ms. Smith, would you, before we all, uh, have people speak, can you give us a brief overview on item A, please?
Will do. So this is for the consideration of a special land use as well.
Excuse me, is your microphone on?
It is. Yes, I'll talk closer. Okay, so this is for site 18030 Ten Mile, which is currently operating as an auto repair shop that has requested a special land use to also sell vehicles. Um, they will be selling vehicles mostly online and will not be displaying vehicles in front for sale, however, based on our zoning ordinance, it still does require a special land use. And so, along with their special land use application, they have submitted a site plan which includes a number of improvements to their site as it is. Um, I would like to note that under the new zoning ordinance that we passed this year, it does not allow for auto dealerships to be, it's zoned ME1, which is our neighborhood mixed use, and that does not allow for auto sales. However, um, they did apply before the new zoning ordinance was passed, and at that time, it was zoned R3, which is, was our regional commercial district, and it allowed for auto sales by way of special land use. So they did apply under the old zoning ordinance before we adopted the new one. And so, although it is no longer, um, a permitted use or permitted special land use, they did make some, take some significant steps to, uh, improve the site to be in compliance with a number of other provisions to improve their site plan that would be in accordance with our new zoning ordinance. For example, they propose removing one of the curb cuts along Grashit, or along Ten Mile. They propose narrowing the other curb cut as well as, um, move narrowing the curb cut along the side street Lexington, so that there's a greater buffer between the sidewalk and the, um, curb cut where cars are driving in and out of. They also add landscaping and will have a landscape buffer between the, uh, front yard parking. And so with that, I think that's a nice general overview. I'm sorry, I normally would pull up their site plan, but my computer is experiencing some issues with Adobe.
Thank you. If anybody wishes to be heard on this project, now is your time to be heard. Uh, you have three minutes, the podium is yours, all we do is ask that you write your name and name down on the piece of paper. Does anybody wish to be heard on this project? Anybody wish to be heard? Third and final time, anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to item six, new business. Ms. Smith.
All right, so this is, so new business, the first item is to consider recommending approval. The first item under new business is to consider recommending approval for the special land use, uh, portion of the application to allow for automobile sales at 18030 Ten Mile. And as I already stated, um, but I will repeat, is that, um, while it does not, while it's not in alignment with our current zoning ordinance based on the use, it does make, they do, the applicant makes steps towards bringing the building structure and building site into compliance with our current zoning ordinance. Um, and so in the review, we discuss the various provisions that we review in determining a special land use such as harmony with the master plan, harmony with the existing character, whether or not it is hazardous or disruptive to neighborhood uses, um, whether it's an improvement to the community, if there's adequate public services to support this, and if it's consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance. And we believe that auto sales as a commercial and office service was supported by the B3 General Business District at the time in which it was submitted. We also believe that the site plan will be an improvement to the community.
Are the applicants in the au- audience?
Yes, we are.
Would you like to go to the podium and make your presentation? If you could please just identify yourself and write your name down on the piece of paper.
Abdul Ghafar Ali, the owner of the business.
Larry Marogi, I'm the one, uh, design engineer.
Okay. So tell us what you want to do.
I had a lot of customers that come to the business, they just bought cars from many different dealers, and their cars wasn't even worth in buying for that much of money. And they come to me and they spend a lot of money on the car that they just bought. Um, we're trying to just help our, uh, our neighbors, our community. Uh, we're trying to buy cars from the auction and just, you know, on demand. Whatever the customer is trying to buy, they come to us, they tell us what they need, and we go ahead and buy it. We're not trying to, we're not going to have any cars there for sale, we're not going to have any display, and that's all I could say.
It's online. Online?
Yeah, online, and we're going to sell them online.
Okay. I drove past today and I saw a number of cars parked in front of the facility. Um, I'm, so were these cars waiting to be serviced?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And where will you house the cars, if they're not going to be in the front lot, where will you house the cars for your online sales? Will you have a secondary place to put them?
Yes, yes, in Dearborn.
In Dearborn?
Yes, sir.
So essentially, your off, your store will become an administrative point?
Say there you are.
It'll, it'll be an office more than anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just there.
Mr. Lubak.
Are you going to continue to operate a repair facility at that location?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No other questions? Any questions down here?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Is, I go past that location frequently, and you guys are marginally making it on that piece of property under the requirements for an auto repair facility. Now, the site plan addresses this based on a sales facility that is going to have no inventory. But there's been nothing that I've seen in the site plan or site plan review that addresses a location still operating as a repair facility.
That's because that use is not under evaluation, that is an ongoing business, and so there hasn't been a change in ownership?
No, but we are making a change in use, and shouldn't the entire site be brought up to all uses that are going to be there, be it the repair facility and sales?
In terms of the special land use or the site plan?
Just in terms of the site plan.
Yeah, I do believe it's noted in the site plan review, but it's not discussed as a special land use. The special land use was just to offer consideration for auto sales. However, that is something that, I mean, that was the application that the applicant submit, it was to request the ability for auto sales. If the planning commission sees it necessary to also include recommending special land use for auto repair, so that it remains an auto repair shop indefinitely, that is within the purview of the planning commission.
I'm more concerned with it being in compliance as a repair shop, the adequate parking for customers, adequate, uh, parking for vehicles that are being repaired.
Yeah, that would be part of the site.
That is all in harmony with the number of repair bays, all of those things is.
Yeah, that would be part of the site plan, which will be considered next.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Also, I now do have the site plan, even though we're just talking about the special land use right now, but this is the proposed site plan on the screen.
I have a question for you. So you're saying to, to the commission that this is an online business?
Yes.
It's an online business, and there will be no vehicles there. However, in the event that vehicles are there pertaining to the online sales, how will we know the difference between the cars for sale and the cars that are being repaired?
We have a waiting area for the cars that need to be repaired, and we don't have any other, because the bag is for cars that is coming inside the shop for the following week, not the same week. And every car that is coming in the same day, it's going to be outside the, in front of the door.
So your online sales will never be at this location?
Yes, ma'am.
They will always be maintained in Dearborn?
Yes.
And if you had to do any repairs to any of the cars that you bought, would you repair them here and then take them back to Dearborn?
Yes, sir. Mechanical, yes.
Okay.
We do have a collision shop near Dearborn, that's where we take them, fix them, but any mechanical, like suspension, pragues, we bring them to this shop. Same day, same day we repair, and then we take it back to Dearborn.
And then you said that the vehicles that are in front of the building right now, these are vehicles that will be repaired next week?
No, in the back of the building.
In the back of.
Whatever is in front, is going to be for tomorrow or the day after.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is, uh, stacking cars at repair facilities seems to be my pet peeve these days, because every time I drive past a repair facility, it just looks like, forgive me for saying this, a junkyard with cars strewn all over the place that never seem to move, so that, that's why I'm asking the question. Um, Mr. Albright knows my joy about, he's stacking cars at repair shops. So it, for me, it's an aesthetic thing, we don't need anything that's not going to look good.
We will try to do our best.
Okay. Any, any other follow-up questions here? All right. Seeing none, should we move on to considering the site, the approval site plan?
Well, first, I believe we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Public hearing was closed. Didn't I close the public hearing? I believe that I did, I did three.
We didn't close the public hearing, did we?
Oh, all right, there we go. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second, yeah.
We have motion and support, secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak.
Yes.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Mrs. Moody.
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes, Chairman DeHunt.
Yes. Now we move on to consideration for approval of the site plan. Ms. Smith.
No, I believe we're.
Thank you, Chair, so again, as part of the special land use consideration, we do ask that, or we do require that there is a site plan submitted.
Hold on. Yes. I am having actually a long day.
Because we're on a new business A, uh, if the commission was inclined to make a motion regarding the special land use consideration, uh, there is a proposed motion as prepared by the planner.
Okay, thank you. Did Mara do this to us on purpose? The motion?
Are we getting?
No, how, how large it is?
Mr. Chair, the reason of the length of motion because of the special land use approval request to require certain findings and compliance with the, uh, with the city's ordinance, uh, that's the reason, I believe, for the length of this, uh, motion.
And you do wish for it to be read into the record?
That would be preferred, yes.
Every bullet point?
If the commission would like, I can certainly read it, if commissioners prefer, otherwise, the maker of the motion can, uh, read the motion, then there's a, a second would be appropriate.
Yeah, well, given the length of my day, I'll defer to you, Mr. Albright, you're more than welcome to read it.
Very well. Okay. Ms. Holman did provide me with a bottle of water, so we're good. Motion to recommend conditional approval of the proposed special land use for an automobile sales facility at 18030 East Ten Mile Road, based on the following findings of fact and with the following conditions. The applicant must meet the requirements and recommendations listed in the planner's review letter dated July 27th, 2023, and the requirements listed in the city engineer's review letter dated July 14th, 2023. Below is a summary of the key items. Number one, an automobile sales facility is not harmonious with the master plan, which assigns this area to be a neighborhood serving pedestrian-oriented corridor. However, the applicant is removing one curb cut and reducing the size of the other two curb cuts, thereby making this use to be more compatible with master plan. Number two, since the automobile sales facility operations will be administered online only and the storage of vehicles will be screened from public view, the use is considered harmonious with and not hazardous to the existing neighborhood. The applicant must add a note on the site plan that all vehicles for sale or for lease will be screened from public view and stored in the rear yard. If vehicles for sale or for lease are stored in the front yard, special land use will be revoked. The use will be an improvement to the community because of the site enhancements required by the site plan review. Improvements include removal of northeast curb cut, reduction of northwest and east curb cut, including moving the east curb cut more south away from the road intersection, creation of three landscape screens between the right-of-way and parking lot, a dumpster enclosure, and planting of eight large deciduous trees as required by the zoning ordinance of landscaping standards. Number four, the applicant must meet the additional standards to operate an automobile sales facility as required in section 50-93B-12. The applicant must provide a note in the site plan addressing the following items. A, if the applicant creates a storage area in the rear yard for vehicles, then the applicant must provide a surface area for the vehicles made of asphalt or concrete with proper drainage. B, the curb cut to the east of the site along Lexington Avenue is within 60 feet from the Ten Mile Road intersection. The applicant must shift the curb cut further south to increase the distance of the curb cut from the road intersection. C, storing dismantled and damaged cars in the front yard regardless of if they are for sale or not is a violation of the zoning ordinance. The business is not allowed to store any dismantled or damaged cars in the front yard and without screening from public view. If the business violates this standard, then their special land use permit will be revoked, and they will not be able to continue operating as an automobile sales facility. D, the only parking spaces shown on the site plan are in the fenced-in area at the rear of the building. The applicant must provide at least two parking spaces, one barrier-free in front of the building. The barrier-free space must be provided closest to the main door. And E, all vehicles in need of repair must be screened from view. The applicant must provide a note on the site plan stating that all vehicles in need of repair will be parked in an area that screens the vehicles from view.
So, Mr. Albright, since the applicant has stated that he's going to keep the vehicles in Dearborn, do we need to, is it added here?
That could be added as, uh, as F, uh, the applicant has stated on the record and agreed that all vehicles, um, will be, uh, stored at an off-site location in Dearborn.
Does anybody wish to make the motion that Mr. Albright so fastidiously read?
I make a motion that we accept the motion that Mr. Albright so eloquently read for us.
Thank you.
We have motion, do we have support?
I'll second it.
We have motion and support, secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Leland.
Yes.
Mr. Lubak.
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes, Chairman DeHunt.
Yes. Mr. Albright, do you want a motion for consideration of the site plan?
Is there going to be any discussion, does the commission have any questions?
Looks like we will have questions.
Not only that, uh, that approval is only pending, uh, city council's approval of special land use.
That would be correct, uh, site plan, uh, use approval, uh, uh, needs to go and ultimately be approved by the city council.
Thoughts?
Either way, we're going, if, if they approve it, then we're going to have to consider the site plan.
Yes.
At a future date. Do we just want to try to handle it today?
Ms. Smith?
And it would be conditional until?
I believe so. I think, to be respectful of the applicant's time, it's best that we address the site plan this evening since they're here.
Again, I'll restate my concern for the fact that, uh, it's an automobile repair facility, and I want to make sure the new site plan is going to be in harmony with our requirements for automobile repair facilities.
I agree with you. I agree. I think that's, I mean, there is, taking a step back from that, I had, so I have the site plan here presented, and if you look at the motion for approving the site plan, there are 11 items, and these are all recommendations to tweak the site plan so that it would be further in compliance. For example, it's recommended that the curb cut, again on Lexington, so on the left side of the screen, be further removed away from Ten Mile. The site, the zoning ordinance requires that a curb cut, an ingress egress curb cut is at least 25 feet from the, um, intersection, and so, we believe that there is more space in which the curb cut could be moved, which would make it further in compliance. That being said, there is a recommendation then to add more shrubs, a deciduous tree in the right-of-way, as well as other measures to make sure that the site is as much in compliance as possible.
So you see this as a significant building upgrade?
I see this as a significant site, as well as building upgrade. Now, I think one thing to be aware of is, they would need a waiver to allow for the loading zone to be in the front yard, and for the space to be reduced from 20 feet in length to 40 feet, and that is depicted on the site plan. Um, another recommendation made is that, in the area highlighted in yellow. Another recommendation made is that, in the area highlighted in yellow, there be parking spaces added. I would like to hear from the applicant if they think this is feasible, given that it would block one of their doors where they pull cars in for repairs. So that would be something to consider amongst yourselves as well, if you see that necessary.
So I'm curious about something. We're essentially here to discuss the online sales portion. We're not necessarily here to discuss the repair facility.
For this portion, for the site plan consideration, that is part of the site and the plan, so you may discuss how the site is used, the layout, and if it's in compliance with the zoning ordinance. For example, we require that if there is parking in the front, or in this case, it would be loading in the front yard, that it be screened from Ten Mile, and that is a requirement that the applicant is going to fulfill. So we did look at how the site is currently being used and how it could be best used to be in the most compliance with the zoning ordinance. So that does take into consideration how it's used as an auto repair shop.
All right, so then I'm going to back that up, and is the building, is the business not in compliance right now? As it is?
The site.
The site is not in compliance?
Yes.
So essentially, we are getting it compliant in order for him to have online selling?
Correct.
Essentially, for him to have a computer in his building to sell cars?
Correct.
That's an expensive business. Okay, I understand now. Ms. Julinski?
Question. One of the recommendations also says to address any concerns presented by the fire chief. Did we have any concerns by the fire chief?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Smith, do you have anything else to add?
I would invite the commission to hear from the applicant in terms of closing off or blocking one of the gates for their auto repair shop, if they could accommodate parking in the front, if they think that's feasible, as depicted on the screen.
Closing one of the bays, you said?
What was that?
What was your question?
If it would be feasible to accommodate the recommendation here that you should provide at least two parking spaces, one barrier-free, in the front of the building, and the recommendation is that it would be in the area highlighted in yellow.
We do have parking spot between the main door and the first bay.
Excuse me. I addressed this as an update, but I did not send it to you because it's already here with me.
Okay.
I put a parking space for the handicap just at the north east corner, close to the door. The door is just beside that light on the other, yeah, if you go to the, yes, a little bit up, yeah, here, exactly. That area there is a little bit to the west here.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, exactly here. So the parking spot will be, I mean, the handicap spot will be there, on the side, not on the front of the building.
Okay.
Can you do that fancy Google Earth thing to show the front of the building?
Yes.
I have it here if you want, if you have a...
Let's get an image of it on the screen of the front of the building.
Can you show this on the screen?
She's going to...
She's going to pull it from...
No, I can't pull that up, but I can pull it.
No, I did not send it to you. If I send you a picture, can you...
Yeah, you could email it to us.
Yeah.
How about coming from?
Oh, yes. It's bsmith@mck.com. Oh, yes.
There we go. All right. So, Ms. Luback, let me see your pointer, please. All right, so show us with the fancy dancy little pointer.
Yeah, right here.
Right behind you, if you could. So, see, this, all these cars kind of make my eyes bleed right now, but show us where the parking spots are going to be.
If you see my mouse.
All right, thank you.
You have it in the phone?
Actually, it would be on the side of the building, right here.
So the handicap parking will be adjacent to the building?
Yes. And so it would be within access of the front door, so it is accessible, and it does not block the loading area for the dumpster. So I would deem that official, I would deem that, because that is, that is, that was the concern of the last site plan, is that there was not a barrier-free parking within close access to the front door.
And then what curb cut is being proposed to be removed? The one closest to the liquor store, this one?
This curb cut is being removed because it is within 25 feet of the intersection.
And then the Lexington curb cut will be shrunken, correct?
Correct. It will also be buffered by green space between the sidewalk and the curb cut for safety of pedestrians, and there will be landscaping added here and on and along Lexington. And there will be improvements to the asphalt.
There will be?
Yes. I believe so. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're going to blacktop the whole thing?
Yeah.
No.
Well, where the asphalt is.
Yes, where the, you can't see it because of the cars, but in the portion that it needs to be repaired. So I would recommend making a motion to approve this with the inclusion of the barrier-free parking space, as shared at today's meeting, August 3rd.
Any further discussion from the commission?
I do, yes. So, looking at the picture before us, there's 16 vehicles there now, and out of those 16 vehicles, 2, 1, 2 is in the vicinity where the handicap parking would be. So on any given day, would vehicles not be in that handicap parking? Yes, that's an old picture, and everything is updated, so if you go right now, you're not going to see that.
Yeah, this is from August 2022.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I agree with the chair that I too have a pet peeve with just cars and abundance of cars anyplace, so my concern would be that you would put vehicles that is being repaired in the rear instead of just stacking 15, 16, 17 cars right there on Ten Mile. Yes, we will.
Just make it look prettier.
Yes.
No, it's not a technical description, but it's just cars everywhere in the city. We should be called Car Point. Any further discussion from our illustrious commission? Is anybody ready to make Ms. Smith's motion? Are we going to make him read some more?
Mr. Chair, would it be commission's preference that I read the proposed motion?
How many pages is it?
Just one, page four.
One, but it's in four-point type.
Ms. Smith, I did have a question. Is that barrier-free parking space, as discussed during this evening's meeting, would that be an additional paragraph 12?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're on.
Thank you. Motion to approve the site plan for an automobile sales facility at 18030 East Ten Mile Road, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated July 27, 2023, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter dated July 14, 2023, within two months of planning commission approval and based on the fact that the site plan is generally in compliance with the ordinance. Listed below is the information needed for site plan conditional approval and waivers. Number one, address any concerns presented by the fire chief. Number two, reduce the curb cut along Lexington Avenue in a manner that brings the curb cut further south as required in section 50-93D-12. Number three, ensure that there is not a clear vision triangle violation to the northwest corner of the site between landscaping curb cut and the Ten Mile Road. Number four, provide a photometric plan that meets ordinance requirements. Number five, since shrubs are being used as a screening wall, the shrubs must screen, therefore plant shrubs, i.e. arborvitae and boxwood, in a linear fashion, 10 feet on center, and meet the requirements of section 50-238 and 50-234. Number six, install more shrubs to act as a screening device in the northwest corner of the site. Number seven, provide the color for the dumpster enclosure facade. We recommend black to match the primary building. Also provide a 10-foot concrete apron. Number eight, plant one deciduous tree to meet parking lot tree requirements. We recommend planting this tree in the northwest landscape bed in the corner of the site. Number nine, plant four large deciduous trees along Lexington Avenue in the public right-of-way, the green space between the sidewalk and the road. Number 10, plant three large deciduous trees along Ten Mile Road in the public right-of-way, green space between the sidewalk and the road. Number 11, provide the necessary notes in the site plan indicating that you will meet all landscaping requirements, as outlined in the planner review letter. Landscaping must be planned within 30 days of receiving a certificate of occupancy/business license. And number 12, barrier-free parking space, as discussed during tonight's meeting. Additionally, we grant the following waivers. This is for the planning commission to decide, and as part of this motion. Number one, grant a waiver to allow the loading zone to be in the front yard and allow for a space reduction from 50 feet in length to 40 feet in length, and that would be, Mr. Chairman, the proposed motion as proposed by the city planner.
Again, we have an eloquent motion read by Mr. Albright. Do we have somebody who's willing to tag on?
I will make that motion as read by Mr. Albright.
We have motion. Do we have support?
I'll second.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Luback?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes? Chairman DeHaunt?
Please make sure there's not a lot of cars there.
Chairman DeHaunt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Am I having a stroke, or are the lights going in and out? Okay.
Is that a yes?
I'm having a stroke. All right, moving on to unfinished business, item seven. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chair. So the first item under unfinished business is for special land use consideration. Special land use consideration for a total experience event hall to be at 24611 Grashit, and this was an item on the agenda from the July 6th meeting, as well as a public hearing was also conducted at the July 6th meeting, and so I would just like to provide some updates that we received since the last meeting. For example, the hours of operation will be from Sunday to Thursday from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 9:00 to midnight. It is the planner's recommendation that the event operations end by 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, or on Sunday to Thursday, with cleanup being completed by 10:00 p.m., and event operations end by midnight on Friday and Saturday, with cleanup ending by 1:00 a.m. Additionally, we, it is confirmed that the total number of guests and employees at any time will not exceed 99 persons. Since the last meeting, Ray's Boom Boom has been dissolved. The attorney of the applicant, Rose Doherty, has filed dissolution papers with the state of Michigan, and so it's been dissolved as of July 20th. Additionally, the applicant understands that they cannot serve liquor without a liquor license. However, the applicant may try to, may apply for a nonprofit license or host events free of charge to allow liquor consumption. We recommend that liquor is not allowed on-site whatsoever if the applicant does not have a liquor license, and that would be a Class C liquor license in which you can serve alcoholic beverages on-site, even if considerations are free of charge. Additionally, it's been expressed that there will be pool tables, and the applicant has confirmed that, once approved, or if approved, they will seek a billiard license with the city of East Point. And lastly, parking lot conditions. The applicant will fill and level the potholes in the parking lot. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. The applicant is here again this evening as well, with the applicant's attorney, if we have any questions for either of them.
Commissioners? This would be a dramatic pause, I sense. I'll start. This project has been difficult. You can, that's fine. The project has been difficult. I guess I'm going to get on a soapbox for a second here, because there's going to be a lot of conditions, and there's going to be a lot of hoops to jump through, quite frankly. And you're going to spend a lot of money, potentially, and you could have the table pulled out from underneath you. And then, secondarily, I don't know how you manage the conditions, frankly, that we're discussing, that we discussed last time, and that are in the packet. I'm scared to death, quite frankly. I hate using the word "um" because it makes me sound unintelligent, but I'm at a loss, and I honestly have had a hard time with this for two months, and Ms. Holman can note the conversations that she and I have had, and I have expressed my concerns about this project. It was stated at the last meeting, a member of the public stated, "Well, we have nowhere to go," and I found that kind of insulting, because we have a number of pubs where people can go, we have a number of restaurants that serve liquor, and I'm just, I'm confused about the whole thing. I've never been to an event center where they had... where they had a bunch of pool tables. So I, I'm scared, and I don't know how to go with this. And we have so many event centers right now, and, you know, whenever I've gone to a banquet center or an event center, there's usually liquor involved. How, how are you going to manage somebody not coming in with a flask?
Security guard, and magnavator, and wand, and, can I respond to some of the things you said? First of all, I wanted to thank Mara and the entire planning commission for the very large amount of time that was given to us last time. I promise it won't be that long this time. I also said my hair would look better. I was in forecourts today, and the elevators were not working at Frank Murphy, so after eight flights of steps, it doesn't. However, your time and assistance for guiding Total Experience has really helped and to fit into a harmonious hall that will fit in with the surrounding area and the community. First of all, as far as the alcohol, if there's no Class C liquor license, they're not serving alcohol. However, there wasn't something that said they had to have a Class C liquor license. It was just a liquor license. And I spoke to Mara about this at a Microsoft Teams meeting last week. They do have the opportunity to have 12 nonprofit events, and I know that Mr. Glover and the Wayne County deputies, he's a reserve deputy, just sponsored one for some other people. And so he would, they would like to pull the permits for nonprofits. They're only allowed 12 a year, and I doubt they would pull that many. As far as serving alcohol otherwise, the only event that they were saying people might want to bring their own would be the City Excellence Awards, which they were willing to provide the hall and food free of charge for, so there wouldn't be consideration if people brought beer and wine. However, that doesn't have to happen either. I went over for a long time with Mr. Glover, the city of East Point ordinances, all the ordinances on special use. Why? He needs a special use. All the alcohol ordinances, in addition to liquor control, which doesn't have jurisdiction, to let him know the ordinances in the city and how that could revoke the special use permit if anyone had alcohol or flask. As far as the pool tables, they don't have a problem removing them if that's a big deal. They wanted to have something in there for people to do. There will be music and so forth. I have reviewed the site plan and the special conditions. Like I said during our Microsoft Teams meeting last week, and I do think that it could be an improvement to the community and be in character. Not only are they leveling the, Mr. Aubrey could not be here tonight, but he's available by phone. If anyone wants to speak to him, Mark Aubrey is the owner of the building and parking lot. He is spending quite a bit of money to fix the parking lot and glaze it and reline it. So that's a benefit to the community as well. Obviously, the trees that are required will be put up and other improvements that are required by the site plan. Mr. Glover is in his 70s. He wanted out of Ray's, and he signed not only dissolution papers, but a consent resolution that he's, that the corporation is no more. That was also provided to everyone. He is, I hope you don't mind that I told them your age, but he intends to be fully compliant with the requirements, and he wants to encourage compliance with all of the rules and regulations. Therefore, employees will be alerted to the city of East Point conditions for this special permit. They will be on the lookout for anyone who appears, even if someone doesn't have a, what did you call it?
Flask.
Somebody here since I've seen one of those, a flask. If, if someone comes into the business, for instance, inebriated, and looks like they're going to start trouble, which sometimes happens at a funeral, and people are upset. He had one today, as a matter of fact, he had to attend. So he's going to have the employees tuned in as to watching the guests as well as the security guard, and that was the reason for the security guard. If the pool tables are a big problem, again, he can remove them. But in addition to improving the parking lot outside of the building, Mr. Glover intends to provide basically jobs and a service to the community by having a place, I mean, the halls that I've been tuned into in East Point, I don't know if they're private social clubs, if there's even something like that here, but they're all B Y O B halls, and that's not what he wants. He doesn't want that type of atmosphere. I don't know if they have special licenses for alcohol, but I have spoken to a few event locations, like, for instance, where we have our bar association meeting every year, and the hours seem congruent with the hours that have been recommended. In fact, all of the recommendations are acceptable to Mr. Glover. He has his architect here again, who's been really, working really hard on the site plan. And as far as the photogenics, a big apology for getting that late. His usual company was not available, so he had to search for another company, and they don't know him, so he wasn't at the front of the line. He said he needed this done. We spoke about it last week numerous times, but that, the photogenics have been done. So I would respectfully request that you give Mr. Glover a chance here to provide a catering hall in the community where people can eat. He's even spoken to different organizations, and I've told him to get in touch with AA people who may want to hold events there, who are clearly not drinkers and not troublemakers. They have various events where they give out chips and so forth at different halls. I have a number of clients who are in those organizations or who are sponsors, and I've spoken to a couple of counselors about that as well. So he's going down that track. He's not going down the track of the other place, which, by the way, in that report, it still notes Ray's Boom Boom Room had police calls from 2017 when they weren't even open until 2019, which you, Commissioner DeHaunt indicated the last time you would have that stricken from the information since I provided their articles of organization. They didn't open until September of 2019. They closed then thereafter in February of 2020 for COVID. They were closed for quite a while. They reopened, but not for very many nights in 2021. They were down to two nights a week. Mr. Glover doesn't remember having that many incidents, but he said of the incidents that did occur, they shouldn't occur. He said, "I go to many places where people aren't shooting people." As far as emergency, if someone has a medical condition and happens to have a heart attack in the parking lot, the EMT has to be called. I don't want that to be counted against them as one of the times that they're using public safety. That's important. But Mr. Glover totally understands the difference between that and people going out into the parking lot and having some kind of altercation. That's why he has security guards who will immediately handle that situation. Correct, Mr. Glover? Were there any other questions?
Commissioners? Mr. Lubek?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. As a person who grew up living one short block away from a pool hall, for some reason, pool hall and trouble go together. And I've been to a lot of different wedding funeral facilities, some of the most rinky-dink fraternal halls you can possibly imagine, and I've never seen pool tables.
He said he'll remove them. He's not going to seek the permit now. He's going to remove the pool tables. So I hope that resolves that. I didn't mean to stop you there, but I just thought, I didn't know if you heard me say he's willing to, and he just said, "I will remove them." He, he put them in there initially, kind of for a place to put them, because he had this big space in there, and they were working on it for so long, but they don't need to be there. Also, I don't know if you got this prototype of the invoice that they're using. They clearly are addressing parking in it, stating there's parking in the parking lot adjacent to the building. Please carpool if possible for events over 60 people. And then in large letters, there's no parking in the no parking zones on Haas Street or Bell Street, and your car will be towed if you park in those no parking areas.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you for a second. Finish your thoughts, please, Ms. Lubek.
Well, I, just real quick, I'm sorry. I believe what you said was, is you didn't see what the big deal was about the pool tables.
I'm sorry. I said that he's going to remove the pool tables.
Prior to, to Mr. Lubek's comments during the beginning, that, that is what you stated.
Well, I guess I've been to places where no liquor is served, where people play pool because they like to play a game of some sorts. But my client just stated that he's going to remove those pool tables from the facility before it opens. How soon can you remove them? Get a truck? He'll remove them by Monday. So I apologize if I misspoke.
I have a comment that really is not any specific bearing on this, other than what kind of society is that we're living in, that people have to tell there's no parking in a no parking zone?
Apparently, there's a tree that covers the no parking sign that was stated the last time we were at this meeting.
I'm not looking for an answer or response. I'm just kind of making a, a general comment.
Oh, you should see what it's like downtown. It's ridiculous.
You know, I, I wish I could remember who did the song years ago, but Everywhere a Sign, and...
Oh, Signs, Signs, Everywhere a Sign.
Pardon? Tesla? What's Musk at?
Moving on.
Anyway. I listened to the song.
But it seems like, and we fall into that trap too, we somehow fall into, well, if you just put a sign up, the problem goes away. And I guarantee you, if somebody were to put a wet paint sign on that wall, somebody would be touching it to see if the paint is, is wet.
Well, that's what his security guards are going to monitor that as well.
And that's not directed towards you. That's just directed at
Okay.
humanity in general.
Right. I mean, it's kind of hard, and, you know, but he's told people that they would, he's told me that he's going to deny people entry if his security guards see them parking in the no parking area. So that's an additional help. And also, they're going to put cameras inside and outside of the building, and if they see people parking there who walk up to their building, they're going to request that they move them or have, call to have the cars towed. I don't know if that was ever included in the site plan, the cameras.
I guess I would have to ask Mr. Albright. Can a private company have a car towed from a no parking zone on a public street?
I don't believe so. They would have to contact the police department. The police department would come out, and if the vehicle was in that spot in any way broken down or abandoned, then it would be tagged and then ultimately towed.
Well, that's the way they'd do it. They'd have to call the police department. They're not going to call a tow company. They're going to call the police.
Ms. Holman?
Yes, if, if there were issues, that the police would have to come out and tick it.
So in-
I, I believe there's a timeframe after which they tow. They don't tow right away, right?
I think you're asking the wrong branch of public safety.
But if the car's on fire, he's all over it.
There you go.
So if I understand correctly, if, if, if Mr. Glover has, his people see that somebody's parked illegally, they will call PD. PD will dispatch somebody and/or a truck to dispose of the car.
They would tick it, I believe, for sure. I, I'm not sure how quickly they would tow it. We'd have to check into that. Again, noting that our police department is, as, as is our fire department, very, very busy, particularly in the evenings and the weekends. So, while it, you know, it is important, it's also, they have a lot to cover.
Well, I know during normal business hours, so to speak, they do have a division called Code Enforcement that does a lot of the parking enforcement and abandoned vehicles and stuff like that, that would handle that during, like I said, normal business hours, but it's during the evenings that...
They got their hands full.
They do.
I drove by to, to have an appointment with Mr. Glover, let's say, Thursday, on Tuesday, at 2:00 in the afternoon. There was my car and his car in his parking lot, and there were cars, so the street, is that Bell or is that Haas? Yeah, and there were cars parked all in that, in our parking zone on Bell Street. At 2:00 in the afternoon, people just parking there. I don't know why, because there's not that much going on in that neighborhood.
Bell is horribly overparked. I have a friend that lives on Bell that has a hard time getting into her driveway because it is horribly overparked.
People don't have driveways and such, or the gas-
They don't care, frankly.
Well, he's going to make a concerted effort to do this, and while he's still investigating valet parking, he would have to find a location, because apparently the place next door that he was thinking of having cars parked at, which we brought up the last time, I think it was mentioned that that was going to become, was sold, or they were not in compliance and was going to become a medical marijuana dispensary or something. But he says there's other unused lots in that area. He's trying to get all of this done, and hopefully he will get a special permit so he can schedule inspections on top of that.
One, one of, I'm going to stop you for a second. So I have a comment. One of the things, and I don't know if the public realizes why we're having such discussions over this. So East Point Manor, God love them, has no, had no fire suppression system for years. It was allowed to go unchecked, which in my mind is unacceptable. So every time I went there, it was a fire hazard, because we were doing well over 100 people. And we are now tasked with trying to make sure that the rules are followed, because we need to worry about the safety of people. And that is why, you know, not just the occupancy issue, I never knew that the parking up and down Bell when East Point Manor had a function was an issue, and it was, prior administrations apparently looked past it. And we are the bad guys right now. We have to look at it. We have to look at the safety, the perception of safety, and, and to play right. And it's unfortunate, for all those years, it was allowed to happen. But it's our responsibility, as well as city council's responsibility, to maintain the safety of people. So this is why you're running the gauntlet with us, quite frankly.
I know. Would someone else, would, if anyone, someone else occupied that building, it's going to be the same problem. He has, as a reserve deputy, his son is an East Point police officer, he has a, a goal here. He spent thousands of dollars on this cleaning up. There was a gas leak left by the prior owner also, which was discovered at the time they were trying to hook up, I'm so sorry, some hot water. And he, all of that was repaired. He spent well over $40,000 now on fixing this place up. He has a, a big investment, and he certainly doesn't want to have a special land use revoked. There is a kitchen fire suppression, and he's not going to have, he already has agreed that these events are going to be smaller events, 40, 50 people, maybe they'll be 60 when he starts out. And he understands that the occupancy has to include employees, and he knows, well, it probably won't happen because they don't have time, but he knows the fire marshal could come in on any single day. I've had clients with bars where that happens, and they come in and see people over occupancy. He even brought that up to me, and he said he's not going to exceed occupancy. He also, very clearly, because he was confused with the sign left by the prior owner about occupants being higher, he also immediately capitulated when it was explained to him that that was not the occupancy of that building, and we spoke to Mara about it. He immediately agreed to 99. That's never been an issue.
And, and I appreciate everything, and frankly, I want, I want Mr. Glover to make money and be successful, and I'm just hoping that with smaller gatherings, he would be successful. So-
Restaurants have high markups. He can do- Restaurants have high markups, he can do a good job.
Ah, but this is not a restaurant.
True, I mean, events.
So you're essentially renting a building, you're, I mean, unless you're providing some sort of food services. Mr. Lubek.
As the self-appointed resident historian up here, you mentioned it as East Point Manor. Let me back you up to the previous business that was in there.
Carpenter's Hall.
Carpenter's Hall. Seven nights a week, bingo. Smoking was allowed in the building. It was jam-packed, and because of the cigarette smoke in there, you could hardly see across the room.
He's an avid non-smoker.
With no fire suppression system.
Mr. Glover is...
Even during a bad storm, I doubt there were less than a hundred people in there. So I mean...
There will not be smoking in the building.
At all.
At all. Mr. Glover hates cigarette smoke, he's a proponent of non-smoking.
But, well, I'm just making a comment that, you know, Chairman DeHaan was mentioning what had happened before, and it was even worse before that.
The pitfalls, I understand.
And the only answer, Mr. DeHaan is right, that we have today is, we have to deal with the situation today. And it's a situation that Mr. Glover or Mr. Smith or Mr. Jones would have to face, whoever tried to open an event or banquet facility in that same location.
Got it.
They'd have to be compliant with today's rules.
Totally understood, correct, Mr. Glover? And, yeah, smoking is not even an issue. He, I saw him, I was present when we first met, where someone else lit a cigarette, and he said, you need to put that out and quit smoking, and we had a long discussion about that, but that's not gonna be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Well, considering you can't smoke in side buildings anyway, I don't think it would be an issue.
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanna get clarification, Ms. Smith, on the page seven, number five item where it says the applicant must repair and resurface the parking lot per recommendations by the city engineer. I thought I had heard earlier that the landlord was going to do that. Do we need to have the proper person represented in the notes for that? Or does it matter?
I don't think so, it doesn't matter.
Okay. And honestly, I'm glad that you don't have to incur that cost.
Any other comments or com...
I have one more question. Um, Ms. Smith, on page eight, we're under the site plan consideration, where it has a site plan conditional approval and waivers. Do, did you receive any of the notes that were needed? Um, I know we have the one on the occupancy, a note with new landscaping and that the site plan will trim existing west side trees. Do we have that all in writing?
Yes, we received the updated site plan today.
Okay.
That details notes about the landscaping.
So all those points were met?
Did you need to speak to the architect case here, if you do?
I was just talking to Ms. Smith right now. I, I honestly would appreciate if you, you could just wait till we're done, please.
I'm sorry.
Uh, we're discussing site plan?
Um, did I jump ahead?
That's all right, I did, I did too.
This would be part of the site plan.
Okay, sorry. Got ahead of myself.
So we discussed it at that time.
It's right there, the trace is right there.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a problem with the parking. The park, the no parking zones are very small. I drove by it, it's like three houses on the north side, and less, and one house on the left side. I mean, they're, you know, so if, if I go there and the parking lot is full, I'm just gonna go park down the street? Just wanna make that, I, I drove by today, and there is a, a tree that is blocking one of the signs.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
The only sign.
No, there's three signs.
Is there three signs?
Yeah.
Maybe someone can cut that down. Mr. Glover is gonna have cameras out, and he's gonna observe, and if, if people are seen parking there, they will not be allowed to enter the event hall.
Okay. Mr. Lubek?
Uh, I believe our police department needs to revisit the no parking areas on both Bell and Haas, because when that was Carpenter's Hall, those parking spaces extended a significant distance off of Grasset, and I know for a fact, at least one new resident to that area decided, they didn't like the fact there was no parking in front of their house, and for lack of better terminology, they personally harvested the sign in the poll that said parking was prohibited, and that it was a no parking zone. So...
You're in the Wayback Machine there.
I'm just telling you what I saw.
I believe it. So where are we at? We need a motion?
Uh, I'm looking at Mr. Albright to see if he is prepared to...
Can you drink a water?
Preach his sermon.
Plenty of water. That's the commission's choice, that I read the proposed motion, I'm happy to do so.
I'm actually more comfortable with that, because you're gonna make sure everything's in there.
All right. Uh, this, everyone can follow along, it's on page six of the planner's report, and the motion is as follows. Motion to recommend special land use approval with conditions, the proposed special land use for an assembly hall at two four six one one Grasset, based on the following findings of fact and with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant must provide a note on the site plan addressing and agreeing with all conditions of approval listed below. Number two, the use is harmonious with the master plan. Future land use map designates the site as regional commercial. Banquet halls are considered regional commercial uses. Number three, with conditions, the use is harmonious with existing character. There are concerns regarding parking and traffic congestion on residential streets during events and hours of operation. To address these concerns, Total Experience Banquet Hall will lose their special land use permit if there are parked cars in the no parking zones along Haas and Bell Avenue during events. Additionally, event hours must end by nine PM Sunday through Thursday, with cleanup ending at ten PM, and end by midnight Friday through Saturday, with cleanup ending at one AM. If hours of operation are violated, the special land use permit will be revoked. Number four, while operating another use in management style similar to Ray's Boom Boom Room would be hazardous and disruptive to the community due to its history of police visits and criminal offenses, Mr. Glover has taken action to disassociate himself from Ray's Boom Boom Room and intends on operating Total Experience Banquet Hall with new management and new clientele. Mr. Glover has dissolved all relations to Ray's Boom Boom Room as of July twentieth twenty twenty-three. To ensure that the use is not hazardous or disruptive, Total Experience Banquet Hall must provide an annual report to the planning department describing any ordinance citations issued in the previous year. Not filing an annual report will result in the revocation of the special land use permit. To ensure that the use is not hazardous or disruptive, excessive police and fire visits will result in the revocation of the special land use permit. Excessive crime on or adjacent to the property will result in the revocation of the special land use permit. Excessive crimes means either one shooting or five acts of larceny or assault. To ensure that the use is not hazardous or disruptive and to comply with the State of Michigan Liquor Control Code, Sections MCL four three six dot one nine one three and MCL four three six dot two zero two seven, consumption of liquor, i.e. beer, wine, and spirits onsite without a liquor license is illegal and will result in the revocation of the special land use permit. Liquor consumption is only allowed onsite if the applicant receives a liquor license. No liquor may be consumed onsite without a liquor license, even if all considerations are free of charge. To ensure that the use is not hazardous or disruptive, the applicant must abide by all the requirements in the letter from the fire department. Requirements include, but are not limited to, providing unobstructed emergency entrances slash exits, providing a doorman to count the number of guests during each event, and providing an updated kitchen suppression system, or removing the kitchen entirely. The applicant cannot open until the kitchen suppression system is addressed. If these items presented by the fire department are not addressed, the special land use permit will be revoked. Number five, if the use or operator does not violate any city ordinances, and if the use does not introduce disruptions to the neighborhood, then the use could be considered as an improvement to the community. Filling in a vacant business and offering a gathering and celebration space are benefits to the community. Conditions listed in item three address this standard of approval. Additionally, as part of the site plan review, the applicant must repair and resurface the parking lot per the recommendations by the city engineer. Resurfacing the parking lot is an improvement to the community. Number six, the use has adequate public services and facilities if Total Experience Banquet Hall limits their guest and employee capacity to ninety-nine persons maximum. Per International Fire Code nine zero three dot two dot one dot two standards, the proposed use must have an automatic sprinkler system for occupancy loads of over ninety-nine people. If a fire suppression system is installed, the applicant must notify the fire department who will reassess the building and safety conditions. If the applicant goes over ninety-nine people in occupancy without installing a proper fire suppression system, the special land use will be revoked. It should be noted that the applicant held an illegal party Saturday, July first twenty twenty-three. Hosting events without a permit is not only a safety hazard, but also shows a disregard of city ordinances. It is questionable if the applicant will abide by city policies moving forward. For this reason, we establish the conditions featured in items two, three, and five, which call for the revocation of the special land use and business license if Total Experience Banquet Hall violates any conditions. Number seven, use could be excessive or provide additional costs to public services, such as police and fire runs. However, the conditions listed in item three address these concerns by revoking the special land use if the use has excessive police and fire visits and crime. Additionally, the use could be considered not excessive to public services if it has the proper licensing. The applicant must seek a license to operate billiards if the city, in the city before opening. If they do not receive a billiards license, their special land use will be revoked. And I believe during the meeting, the applicant has acknowledged that the pool table will be revoked.
Yes.
At this time, yes.
Yep. And number eight, with conditions and an updated site plan, the use does not have additional noise or glare pollution. The site plan addresses any violations related to glare, and conditions listed in item two limit hours of operation and address noise concerns. And finally, number nine, with an updated site plan, the use is consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance by providing required screening devices, parking lot surfacing improvements, and enhanced landscaping.
Um, Mr. Albright, so I'm going back to the parking lot, and I believe it did, it was not a resurfacing. Essentially, it's a patch job?
He's going to, I mean, it's still like, not a hundred thousand dollar job, but about twenty-five thousand, and they may be splitting it. He's going to fill in the potholes and re-glaze and re-line the whole parking lot, so it will be level.
Thank you. And then, uh, going back to the section about liquor, and it said onsite, does onsite include the parking lot?
Onsite means onsite, and a car that's parked inside the structure or inside the structure or inside the...
Absolutely, that's...
And then, uh, you also had said that the applicant had mentioned that they would remove the billiard tables, and I believe Ms. Daher said, at this time, I would like it to state that the billiard tables will be removed, not at this time.
Oh, no, they will be removed by Monday.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lubek?
Uh, there is also here, excuse me, there is also here some additional waivers that need to be granted, which is in a memo from Ms. Broziewski. One, to grant a waiver for off-street parking to be regulated by occupancy, not usable floor space based on urban planning best practices.
Commissioner, that's for the site plan approval, that's separate from the special land use.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay.
I put the cart in front of the horse. I guess we're all guilty of that tonight.
Commissioners, do we have any other comments before we ask for somebody to make this motion?
Yeah, I got, I got one. I can't find it when I need it, but it said if somebody parks in the no parking zone, then, then his special land use permit can be revoked? I don't think that's right. I mean, it's not his fault, you know, it, all these other things are things he's supposed to do, and if he doesn't do them, you can take away his, his special land use. But to be, you know, have somebody else, you know, park there because they feel like it, and, and to punish him for it, I don't think that's right. I think that line should be removed from the, you know, from the motion.
Mr. Albright?
That's in condition number three.
Oh.
Mr. Albright.
Okay. Well, if his lot person, door person, has called the police if somebody's parking illegally, there would be a record of the call being made, and wouldn't that be sufficient to protect him from losing his special land use? Would you, would you agree to that? So if somebody parks there illegally, Mr. Glover's guy picks up the phone, calls police department, there's gonna be a record that his person called, so to me, he should be in the clear if he's made the call.
Well, actually, not necessarily, because there's an oxamara in there, because they're saying that will be a number of his excessive calls.
That's true.
So it wouldn't be fair to him, I agree.
But he is gonna deny entry to anyone who parks in that.
We're, we're just talking amongst ourselves.
Okay, if I, if I might, I'm understanding completely what Mr. Lalan is saying. Uh, there's some neighbors are gonna be unhappy that a business opens there. So, oh, he's gonna lose his permit to operate if somebody parks in the no parking zone? Yeah. They pull out and they park in the no parking zone. They're not at his facility. They're in front of their own home, they're in front of a neighbor's home, whatever. I agree with Mr. Lalan that Mr. Glover, or whoever it is, should not have to pay the penalty for somebody else being stupid when it's totally unrelated to the business. I just don't know how we can address those issues.
Unless we take that section out as a, as a, as a, as a police call and take that out as a condition, not that the parking, that Mr. Glover's team needs to do everything they can to make sure nobody parks there. That needs to stay in force, but I don't, yeah, I agree as well with Commissioner Lalan that it's not fair to call, take a special land use away because somebody's being a jerk and parking in the wrong spot. Um, so how do we, how do we phrase that in an acceptable fashion, where we're keeping the spirit of what needs to be done, but not dinging him for... Mr. Albright?
Mr. Chairman, the paragraph three could be restated as follows. Uh, the, um, last part of the third sentence could be stricken altogether, and some additional language would be added, so it would be, with conditions, the use, with, with conditions, the use is harmonious with existing character. There are concerns regarding parking and traffic congestion on residential streets during events and hours of operation. To address these concerns, the applicant agrees that he shall take reasonable steps to enforce all parking restrictions.
So then the question is, what's a reasonable step?
Having, having the door person monitor parking around the premises to ensure that there is no illegal parking. If there is illegal parking, that is observed, perhaps identifying the, the owner or driver of that car to inform them that they're parked illegally and that they must move the vehicle or to bar entry if the door person sees the person parked or parking and attempts to enter the premises.
That's fair.
Um, another step would be to contact the police department if the driver or, because there may be a situation, I don't know how rare that, perhaps there is somebody parked there, and maybe they're not, you know, uh, going to Mr. Glover's place of business. So we don't, we certainly don't wanna penalize him for somebody who is parked illegally, but there's not, they're not patronizing his business. So, but at least the, the door person, if they see a car that's parked illegally, they would certainly call the police department and say, I'm reporting this, and just taking reasonable steps to make sure that their business is being operated. "I'm reporting this," and just taking reasonable steps to make sure that their business is being operated safely and in accordance with the special land use.
I like the thought of the phrase, "will take appropriate actions."
Mr. Chair, if I may, how about as it relates to his customers? Caveat, yes, it relates to his customers. He can't be responsible for neighbors parking or visitors parking that are not.
Right, but he, he, he could bar entry to someone that the security guard or he sees on camera parking there. I don't think someone's going to get all dressed up to go to an event, drive and get there and then be told they can't enter. They're going to have to move their car. I mean, that, that's another caveat that might help this situation. But maybe say best efforts instead of reasonable efforts, like best efforts.
Mr. Albright?
The, the language could read, "applicant will make best efforts to enforce parking, to enforce parking restrictions as to his patrons."
Okay. Is that acceptable verbiage for the commission?
Okay, so that would, so condition number three would read as follows. With, with conditions, the use is harmonious with existing character. There are concerns regarding parking and traffic congestion on residential streets during events and hours of operation. To address these concerns, the applicant will make best efforts to enforce parking restrictions as to his patrons. Period. And then the second sentence there in item three would, would remain unchanged.
Okay, fair. Does anybody other, else on the commission have comments? Do we have somebody willing to make the motion of, that Mr. Albright read?
Chair, I would make a motion that we accept the reading of the recommendation by Mr. Albright.
We have motion. Do we have support? We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Where do we get the comment?
All right. We have more time for comments.
Okay. Part of this is we have to decide whether or not this is going to be harmonious with the community. And I'm a firm believer that the prediction of future behavior is past performance. And that is being reinforced here tonight by some of the verbiage that has been stated. This could be an asset to the community, could be. It also could not be. What I need is with 100% certainty to know that it will be. And based on, and let me borrow my fellow commissioners' comment from last month. Based on all the dancing that took place last month and the avoidance of direct answers to simple questions, I don't believe this is going to be an asset to the community. And quite frankly, on that reason, I don't, it's my belief, you haven't met your burden, so I'm not going to be able to vote in favor of it.
All I can say is that he's.
This is not time for debate or comment. This is time for commissioners to comment on how they're going to vote.
Kind of along that line, I, I'd have to say that, Mr. Glover, I would have appreciated hearing more from you than your attorney on everything since this is your business. I, I think you could have made your own case.
He's very quiet and his brother, he went to a funeral.
I'm sorry. I really would have liked to hear more from you. As with Mr. Lubek, it is very difficult to want to move forward with this. And we do have criteria that we have to meet and harmonious being the most important to our community. Our, as you heard, our, our police and fire are already overburdened. We don't need to burden them more with past events that could take place going forward. I appreciate that you are your own person. I, I think that someone constantly saying that you're a reserve Wayne Sheriff Deputy, pardon me for if I got that wrong, and that your son is an East Point Officer has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. Sometimes more words should be less words and stick to, to the facts of what is going on. I do wish you luck in your endeavors and I, again, really would have wished to hear more from you, to hear about your passion and how you're going to change and have the community have a wonderful place to go and that you're going to be a good neighbor.
I'm seeing what you're saying.
She hasn't, I, I, she wanted.
Any other comments from the commissioners? All right. So we have motion and we have support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Leland? Mr. Lubek? Really having a tough time with us, honestly. Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHaan?
So apparently it boils down to me and I am going to make a comment. Regardless of what we decide here today, you ultimately have to go before city council. And if you think this was the gauntlet, just wait for that. I too am concerned, but I'm going to give you a chance. And I'm going to hold you to a high standard. And I'm going to tell you right now, I got a lot of friends that live on Bell that will be the first people that will pick up their phone and call me if something is bad. And I will be the first person to call the city or send an email. So I'll give you your chance and I'll say yes. Conditional on city council's approval. Having said that, the next item for business is the site plan approval. I'm wondering if it would be in the best interest that we table that conditional upon city council's approval of the special land use. How do we feel about this?
My feelings are let's get it done today. This commission has voted to recommend approval. Had this commission voted to recommend denial, I would feel differently about that. But since they have voted for approval, let's get the site plan done while we've got all the parties here today. I don't know that there's all that much that really isn't in the next motion that Mr. Albright's going to be reading. You're earning your money tonight, partner.
So are we proceeding with the site plan?
Yes.
All right, what, okay.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Okay, so I am, so for the site plan, I do have it pulled up here. And again, this is a reoccupancy of an existing building with the intention of having an event hall. Now, I'm just going to jump into the waivers that are required to review. So there would be a waiver for off-street parking to be regulated by occupancy, not usable floor area. And we say that because we've restricted the capacity to 99 persons. And with that restriction, they would be in compliance with the off-street parking requirement. However, if we regulated, regulated it based on usable floor area, they would not. And so for these reasons, we recommend that the off-street parking be regulated by occupancy. Second of all, from the last meeting, there was a waiver to reduce tree planting requirements due to insufficient room on site so that they can meet the off-street parking requirements. In the updated site plan, there is the inclusion of one ornamental tree, a crabapple tree, as well as one deciduous honey locust tree. Now, the architect can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe that the cost of planting 20 additional trees that would be required by the ordinance have been provided. And that would still be a recommendation that the applicant would pay this money in the form of a check or cash to the city before receiving a business license so that the 20 trees can be planted elsewhere in the city, including right-of-way property.
I've never heard that one.
Are there any additional questions in regard to the site plan?
I have a question and I'm going to use Mr. Lubek's fancy thing, so look behind you. So this curb cut off of Haas right now has, whatever you want to call it. Yeah, parking blocks. Is that going to be reopened?
Based on the site plan, it looks as though that would be used.
So used as in reopened?
Correct.
Okay, so you'll have any, you'll have two entry points.
Yes, and I would actually recommend that for flow of traffic.
Commissioners, any other?
I'm sorry, did you say a crabapple tree in the parking lot?
In front of the building, so it actually hangs over the grass or, let's see, I'll shoot my mouse. It would be this tree, so it hangs over the grass and then the sidewalk might be, could potentially, yeah, be under the tree.
Wouldn't that incur quite the mess?
Potentially, yeah. But it would be on the property owner and occupant to make sure that it is a safe pathway.
It could be a different ornamental tree. It doesn't have to be that tree.
I'm, I'm just thinking again of.
It's an existing tree. It's not like he's saying, "I want to plant one here." If it becomes to the point where Mr. Glover believes it's a nuisance, I think he would be within his rights to replace it. And I don't, I'm not willing to force that on him.
Who knows if the tree even is blossoming crabapples, it might not blossom, it might not bear fruit.
I, I was just trying to forward look and help him out. But if you do plant it and cut it down, I'll take the wood.
Could I ask Ms. Smith the question? Because there was never anything about taking the cost of 20 trees and donating it to the city. And any of the material I received, it said it was a waiver and that only two trees had to be planted. That would be an exorbitant cost in addition to all of the other business license fees, application fees, et cetera, that he's spent. So I, I, I never, Mara never brought that up. We just had a Microsoft team meeting with the architect last week and she said that she read that waiver that was brought up at the last planning commission meeting as to two trees only and the requirement for 20 would be waived. So is that something new, Ms. Smith?
No, this is not something new. This is from the letter dated July 27th, 2023, from Mara Broziewski. And it says, "I apologize to my colleague." But it does say verbatim, "Additionally, we grant the following waivers. Item number two is grant a waiver to reduce tree park, tree planting recommendations due to insufficient room at the site. Per the ordinance, the applicant is required to plant 22 trees. We recommend planting two trees, one ornamental and one deciduous tree. The planning can, commission can consider requiring the applicant to make a payment in lieu of landscaping. In this case, the planning commission would establish a number of deciduous trees. The ordinance calls for 22 large growth deciduous trees and the applicant is providing two trees. With a required amount of trees, the applicant's architect would provide a cost estimate for planting 20 trees or a required amount of trees established by planning commission and the city engineer would verify this cost estimate. The applicant would pay this money in the form of a check or cash to the city before receiving a business license. If the money is not paid, the applicant would lose their special land use permit." I summarize, given that this was sent to all the commissioners.
I understand that may consider, but he hasn't even been open yet. He, I think it would be very difficult for him to pay for that prior to it. So I would respectfully request that the amount of trees that may be considered be lower to a smaller amount, given the cost of trees that I discussed with his horticulturist or landscaper a few weeks ago when they were considering the trees.
Can we hold on for a second, please? Commissioner Lubek has a comment.
Yeah, that would be a consideration for the commissioners to make.
Mr. Lubek?
Okay, this is a provision that's been in our ordinances for a while. And this pertains mainly to site plans where we have an ordinance that says how many plantings and how many trees are required for that size property. And we realize there are some properties like this one that's existing, currently built out, where attempting to put that many trees in that space is just not possible. So the fairest thing to do to people who can accommodate the trees is say, "You will plant the trees. It's just that you're going to be planting the trees that will not fit on your property at an alternate location." So I, I mean, how fair would it be to somebody who can fit 22 trees on their property to have to plant 22 trees? And somebody who can't, we say, "Oh, well, you don't need to plant them. That's not fair." This was all in the interest of fairness and having the amount of trees that we need to have in a city that is sorely lacking trees.
And the, and just to dovetail off of what Commissioner Lubek said, it's not just money that gets sent to the city. They actually go out and they plant 20 trees.
Right. I was just wondering, since it said may consider, it was the last sentence in that report. I'm sorry about that. I'm still recovering from surgery. I read the whole report and I didn't see that addition because it's never been brought up or discussed with me or us at the last meeting. But I was just wondering if the court may please consider a smaller number of trees? Because before he gets his business license, he's not making any money whatsoever and what were you going to say?
Well, yeah, this, many communities have this similar ordinance. But they usually have a set fee that is either negotiated with the Parks and Rec Department or whoever you have that is in charge of installing trees in right-of-ways. And like if you, if you live in a single-family home, you can go to the city and say, "I want a new tree. My tree died." And they say, "Well, for X amount of dollars, you get a new tree." And it's just kind of unique that it's, the burden is put on us to find the cost of the trees and then we get it verified by you.
Well.
So it just, I mean, and we all overread this because I was surprised. It's the very last paragraph in this very long letter.
So sorry.
So, yeah, sorry. I've read this letter three times.
Okay.
I think you could defer it to say, work with your Parks Department, you know, to do the trees.
As I understood this ordinance when it passed, as part of the fee and charges schedule that is annually adopted by the city council, it was to have the amount per trees in it. If that's not the case, that's a correction we need to make.
He can plant, he can donate the 20 trees. It's just, the issue is when, because he's not making any money right now.
Well, nobody makes any money till they open their business. If this was a new business and they had room for 20 trees, they would still have to pay them without making any money before they could open.
Do you have, will you be able to come up with the last 20?
So I want to ask a question of city administration and of Ms. Homan, if we can. What's the cost of a tree? What do we, what is the, what is the fee?
My apologies, I don't know directly, but it is on the new fee schedule that was approved by city council. I see council member DeMonico researching.
He's favorishly typing away.
It's under DPW, right, right next to memorial trees. Go to, it's at the end. It's one of the last items, last sections. But it was recently adopted. So there is a set fee and it is on the fee schedule that was adopted and it's been put on the website.
It's under DPW, you said? It's under DPW, you said?
Yes.
Yeah, you're just looking on the fee schedule, right?
And then let me ask you a question, just hypothetically. So 20 trees, 20 trees are required. If we were to, I'm not saying make any... No, he's planning to. But if 20 trees were, would be payment in lieu of trees, if we were to make an accommodation not to cut the amount of trees, but to elongate the timeframe under which he is required to do that, that would be eminently fair? Do we know what the, have we determined the cost of a tree?
Yeah, fee in lieu of tree, $500.
Five per tree?
That's what it says in here.
Are you planting a fully grown tree?
They cost $150.
Yeah, the city of Fairville is $125.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Yes, but then, that's the cost of the tree. But then there's the cost of planting the tree.
No, that's a planted tree in the, in the right-of-way, in the...
That's what his lands, yeah, his landscaper said. For the tree and the planting, $150. I guess for the...
And $10,000, or is it? Remember, Dan Mather?
Ms. Holman?
That's ridiculous.
Chair?
Please.
Um, there is, there are costs in addition to the actual tree. We have the same issue with our memorial tree program. We did recently get an auger, but the, the amount required, the amount of time required to get the crew out there to dig it, everything like that. I guess it would be up to the commission if you wanted to create a different amount. In this particular case, that's up to you. But, yeah, and actually, at the end of the meeting, at Commissioners' comments, I was going to introduce our new fellow because he is working on a number of different tree programs, but that's separate from this. So there are costs, significant costs as it comes to planting a tree.
How many people are planting this tree for $500? And I certainly don't want to trump city council or attempt to trump them. If this is the fee that they have determined is acceptable, it's not appropriate for us to try and mitigate that amount. But how, $500? How many people are planting this tree?
Well, we have three workers that go out with auger and the tree and bring the tree out there.
And what kind of timeframe does it require to plant a tree?
I have to find out from DPW.
I can give you a little bit of insight on it. First, they have to go out and mark the location. Then they have to get a hold of mist dig.
Mist dig.
To make sure that they're not going to be getting into any of our infrastructure.
We have, we do have...
At some point, they have to go out to the nursery, pick up the tree, bring the tree back to the city, bring the tree to the planting site, where they then have to do whatever it takes to plant the tree and however much time that takes. And somehow, somewhere, they calculated a cost that has me shocked of $500.
It's four times the amount of any other city.
I would like to share that I think the fee shows the seriousness into which the city of East Point values trees and having that on-site. And also, we do require that for parking lots larger than 20 parking spaces, that there be an interior tree planted every five spaces. And in this case, we, there's a lot of impervious surface here, a lot of heat that will be reflected. So I do think we, it, the fee shows how serious in which the city of East Point takes the requirement of landscaping.
And pardon my sarcastic comment, but, you know, we could take some of these trees, plant them along Bell and Haas to obscure the no parking signs.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
One of, one of the projects that our, our fellow has been working on is the fact that we are one of the lowest tree canopies in Macomb County, and it truly is an issue. So we take this seriously. Again, that's, if the commission would like to have council readdress this, we can certainly do that.
Well...
I don't believe we'd be staying in our own lanes.
It's not appropriate.
For council to take our recommendation to reassess the fee. If that's something council did on their own, that's something council did on their own. I believe this is important. I mean, one of the biggest things we can do to combat global warming is to plant trees. We do have the option on this commission of elongating the time period in which we will require the trees to be planted. And of course, the stipulation then would be if that schedule is not met for those payments, the special land use would be revoked. So I mean, it's important. I really hate when people get in over their heads in a project without knowing what they needed to know before they did it. Because now you're, you're at a point where, you know, do I just cut my losses and run or not? And...
We were just informed of this. This was not in any of the other prior recommendations by the, the planning commissioner. And it was not brought up during our Microsoft meetings when we went over the conditions. It still was, and that was on the day that this letter was sent.
Well, oddly, the language that's in the letter says, "We were going to supply you with a cost estimate for the trees that would be verified by the city engineer, never mentioning that you already had an amount that you said was cash in lieu of tree."
Mr. Albright?
So it gave us the out that we should, it should go back to us and say, "We're going to get an estimate. We'll plant our own trees, and if you think it's fair." Because it says that right in your letter.
And we can plant the trees.
Hold on, please, Mr. Albright.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps the commission wants to have a discussion as far as bringing up Mr. Lubek's point about, you know, structure and the so over a period of time perhaps requiring the planting of X amount of trees in year one of operation, add that on some type of graduated system, maybe a smaller amount in the first couple of years and as Mr. Glover's business becomes more profitable than the requirements for meeting this condition on that enforcement time.
I mean...
I do want to respond to the architect's comment. The ordinance is the letter of the law. What's said in a memoir recommendation is secondary to that.
Got it.
Got it.
No, that, that sounds good, Mr. Albright.
So, this is what I would, I would propose. You have 24 months. That's what I would propose. Give you two years. You could plant and work administratively with the city, but you have two years, and there needs to be at least 10 trees planted in the first year and 10 trees planted in the next year. And that would be a fair, and it doesn't have to happen at one time. And if you want to provide a little sign to put underneath, say, provided by total experience, God bless, if the city will allow it. Just no crabapple trees.
It's $5,000 a year.
So is, well, Sheila has an issue with crabapple trees.
Trying to help out with the most on the property, that's all.
I have a bigger issue with peach trees in the mess they leave behind.
I don't like crabapple trees either.
Do we think, what do we think about two-year timeframe?
That's fair.
Mr. Lalanne, are you comfortable?
Yeah.
How many can we fit in that grassy area?
Not many.
Which grassy area?
The, that one, come on.
Oh, this, this grassy area?
The bigger one, yes.
I can't see you getting many trees there.
The only hesitation is just that I don't want to block the sign.
No.
Or the sidewalk.
Right, right, right.
Uh, could I make an alternate suggestion? Where we start with five trees and then provide the remainder over the next two years?
How, how, how many trees total?
20 is what he needs to pay for.
So you're saying you said we start with two, you said with five?
No, no, he's already going to put two on.
No, the, the two that he's going to put on, that doesn't change.
Yeah, that doesn't change.
But out of the 20 other trees, five to start and the remainder, remaining 15 over the next 24 months.
So you're asking a $2,500 investment immediately?
Yes.
But can I have to pay that over time? Because that's the problem. They're not open, and they're spending so much money consistently.
I agree.
They'll do the trees, but if you could do the way...
Oh, yeah, you will, because the special land use will go away.
No, and he's happy, he's happy to provide the trees. He wishes he could put more on his own land and...
Ms. Ulsky?
I honestly don't have a problem with three years. Not, you know, I mean, so many per year, but, I mean, that, that is quite the hit to a, to a brand-new business.
Well, okay, that, we take a hybrid of that three-year. We plant five trees and then plant an additional 15 trees over the next three years, which would be essentially five trees a year.
So I've never had my own business, but five trees in the first year? I mean, are you usually running a... Oh.
It's a cost, they call it a cost of doing business.
Okay.
Well, does he still need to get an estimate for them to plant trees?
Ms. Smith, Ms. Holman?
So that was the recommendation?
Yes. Um, may I make a recommendation on the timeline?
Please.
That realistically, you wouldn't be able to plant until spring at this point in time and to allow the business time to operate, that the first requirement be at the end of spring, so May 30th, followed by over the course of three years for the remaining trees.
Uh, if I could ask Mr. Kraus. He and I had spoke before the meeting briefly, and it sounded like they were looking at a fall timeframe for those to plant trees.
Sorry, I'm new to this. Yeah, you are accurate with that statement. The end of September, early October is prime time for planting season for trees.
Okay, so what about this? Being that that's very short order. Have the first payment in for the plantings in time for the 2024 season? Which essentially would be 14 months.
To start, that's great, okay.
And then the remainder over the next three years. Yes, Mr. Albright?
How many trees by the 2024 season?
Five is what I'm suggesting. We'll see what the rest, I mean, this thing has changed a half a dozen times already in a few minutes, and who knows what it's going to end up like?
So you're saying five by 2024, then the remaining 10 in three years?
Oh, the remaining 15.
Because it is a total of 20.
Yeah, five will be done prior to the end of '23, and then the remaining 15 trees will be done over three years.
I mean, I'm, I'm hoping the business is a boom, and he can come back after the first year and go, "Here, here's my 15 trees, all paid for."
How about three by the, by the fall of 2023 or end of '23, and two by the spring of 2024? Is that what you're suggesting? Because he's barely going to be open. We go, we have to still go to city council, get all the inspections done. He won't even be open till...
Well, that's why I'm suggesting...
Yeah, you just shortened your timeframe.
You're shortening the timeframe.
We, we gave you extra.
I thought you said by the end of 2023, he needed...
No.
No, no. Five trees for the 2024 planting season.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you properly. I apologize. Got it.
Here's my cap.
And then the remaining 15 over the next three years.
That's very acceptable.
Not that we want him not to succeed, but if over those next three years, the business were to close, he would still be responsible for the fee, correct?
That would have to be part of the motion, the stipulation.
I don't have a problem with making that part of the motion.
No, do I? I mean, we're, essentially, you're getting three and a half years, essentially.
That's fair.
Okay.
Now typically, if that's the setup, you would establish a bond or a line of credit for, for a performance guarantee, for a payment guarantee. Otherwise, it would just be part of...
Which essentially gets us back to he might as well have paid for all of the trees upfront?
No, because it's a line of credit. So it's, it's, it's similar to establishment of a loan, but he doesn't have to front the money. This is pretty standard in terms of what's called a surety bond.
Yeah, but I've never heard of it for planting trees. That's for a performance at a venue of a...
Performance guarantee.
Of a group. And I, I would object to that because I think a surety bond's going to cost him $600. I do them all the time for entertainment venues, and they're expensive. I don't think he should have to provide a line of credit. I don't think that's something in his 70s that he's probably...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Well, we can change it.
So how about this? We stick with the original plan, three and a half years. I think it was Commissioner Lubek had wanted five trees by the, was it, spring of '24? And it's in the special land use that if it is not followed through... I, I agree, I don't think we need to do a bond. I'm going to trust Mr. Glover and his team, and that if he does not follow through, I would hate to see you lose your business because of trees. But make it part of the special land use. If the, if, if the allotted amount of trees are not done each successive year, then...
That's a different...
Okay, that, that...
That's different than what I'm saying.
That's a different threshold.
I'm saying if for some reason...
Oh, no, I understand what you were saying.
Oh.
Uh, that if, if, God forbid, he not make it, that he's respons... That, that should be part of it, that the debt is still owed to the city of East Point. But instead of going through this whole surety bond thing, just require in the special land use that if the business is still continuing...
That's not going to work.
Explain.
Mr. Glover goes bankrupt. His special land use is of no significance, and we don't have the trees he owes us.
Correct.
I mean, we can always go back to option A. 20 trees before you open the business.
Ms. Holman, can we get a city administration viewpoint? Yes, I know, I'm putting you on the spot, but I'd like, I think it's important. No, I want to hear what the city administration has to say.
First of all, I think the plan was by 20, the fall of 2024, so next fall, the first five trees. And then in succession after that. I, I think should something happen to the business that I would think somebody else would come in, in place. Hopefully, assuming he's successful and everything's booming, that, that things will move forward. But I, I think that's, that's fair. So the five trees by the fall of 2024. And then in succession, every year after that. I think that's what was decided.
I wholeheartedly would like the 20 trees now. But I'm trying to be sympathetic and compassionate for somebody who got in way over their head on a project. And I'm willing to reduce that to 19 trees and the bond. If a tree is 500 bucks and a, and is 600 bucks, we're splitting the baby here. We're giving, requiring you to have one less tree, and we're covering the majority of the bond by the reduction of the number of trees. Our interest is, is in getting these trees.
What if we did eight per year instead of five to begin with? An eight, because it's 20, eight, eight, and then four the third year? So there's more upfront. Because he's not, paying for a performance bond is expensive, and he'd have to pay it every year. That's at least $1,500 more that he's having to pay in addition to the trees. So what if we had a plant by...
Well, the easy way out of that is if the bond is that expensive would be you just pay the trees upfront and be done with it.
Right, well, he doesn't have, can we, would we consider doing like eight trees?
What if in, here's the problem. What if in the second year, something horrific happened and the city revokes the special land use? We still want our trees. And the only way we can be guaranteed having our trees is a per... the special land use? We still want our trees, and the only way we can be guaranteed having our trees is a performance bond.
Ms. Moody, did you have something to say, or add?
Well, um, just sitting here, listening to everyone going back and forth, I, I truly, I sympathize with, um, Mr. Glover at this point, that you may have, you know, came in a little over zealous, but, uh, everyone is saying that this was just dropped on you. I don't know if that's true or not. I believe that we can go back to what we said initially, and that is, uh, start with the, the five trees by the end of 2024, and then give him the three years to get the remaining trees. In the event that the business collapses within that time, then that is where we would, as a city, would have to go after him legally to get those trees.
Now, you're having the city incur costs.
Well, no, we could, we could agree to a judgment being entered without a consent judgment being entered. I could sign one, get one signed with Mr. Albright, he can hold on to it, and there could be a judgment for, blank, for anything that happens, and it would be filed, and we'd waive notice and presentation.
Yeah, the commissioner is absolutely right. We wanna, we would not want to incur the city with additional expense.
Can I just make-
Yes, please.
A point of order. If he's in our site plan, you're actually getting seven trees, because we're planting two on the property. So you're getting seven in the first year. And second, if his business goes out, hopefully, someone else will take over this property. They would be going through the same manner of getting a presentation, and then they would have to do trees in lieu of not having them on the property.
Correct.
I-
You will get your trees.
Ms. Smith?
No, I need to correct that procedure.
Because I'm reading, I'm reading this memo-
Yeah.
And it says, "The applicant is required to plant 22 trees." Not have, but plant, meaning he is, regardless of how many trees he's got now, he is lacking 22 trees.
Yes, also, just to correct the procedural, uh, process here, so we're here now because we have to have a special land use. Once it's passed by council, it will remain forever, so when the business is sold, it will be sold with the special land use and the guarantee that it can remain as an event hall. Um, and so at that point, it would just be a reoccupancy, it would not be reevaluated in front of the commission, which this conversation seems very tedious, but that is why the commissioners are being so thorough, because this is a one-time chance guarantee-
One-shot deal.
That the site is looking out for the safety, health, and welfare of the community, and so this is something that we have determined is important to the community, and so while this seems like a tedious conversation, it is important, because we will not have this with a new business or in the future.
No, it's, we agree, but we just found out about it last, this was never brought up before.
And I apologize that it was not brought up at the meeting. I did not attend those, but I would say that we also want to see the success of a business, and we're trying to make this realistic. I just also am here to consult the commission, and I want to make it sure that if their intention is to have the trees or the money for the trees, that it be guaranteed, and the way to do that is to enter an agreement. So I would defer to the city attorney on, if there are alternatives to a surety bond, that we explore those options.
Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, council's already offered to enter into a, a judgment that would not be recorded. Another, our alternative would be to require Mr. Glover to, uh, plant the five trees with, by the 2024 planting season, and over the course of three years, plant the remaining fifteen trees, and also have Mr. Glover sign a promissory note that he will be responsible for those additional fifteen trees, uh, and if he does not do that, that, that promissory note would have a provision in there that if the city has to sue to enforce the promissory note, that Mr. Glover would be responsible for all costs of enforcement, including reasonable charges.
Please.
And also not dischargeable in bankruptcy could go in there, too.
Mr. Albright, I have a question on that. In the unfortunate circumstance that this endeavor goes bust, and Mr. Glover files bankruptcy, how is that going to affect anything as you have just suggested?
It would, it would most likely be discharged, it would be subject to being discharged in bankruptcy, just like any other business that's not successful, and certainly want, we want it to be successful. Uh, that's one of the risks of entering into a business endeavor, that it may not be successful, and, uh, you know, Mr. Glover could lose assets as well, but at least we would have this promissory note that would be enforceable, would have Mr. Glover's signature on that-
Right.
And it would be something that would be enforceable against him, short of him filing-
And in a bankruptcy, it wouldn't be, pardon me, it wouldn't be worth the paper it's written on.
Probably not.
Okay, and, and that's completely what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to get our 20 trees.
We could put-
And, and the downside to this is-
We could put not dischargeable in bankruptcy.
At this particular point in time, it's 500 for a tree. You're pushing this out four more years, the price of that tree could balloon up to 750 or $1,000 a tree.
Truth be told, though, we're the ones pushing, we're, we're, we're the ones proposing pushing it out.
Well, at their request.
Well, he's just telling me now, he's gonna get the, as soon as he starts making money in a business, he's gonna get the tree planting issue resolved sooner rather than later over three years, because he doesn't want, he's not someone who likes having like a debt over his head. So he just needs some time to get his business started and make some money. We don't have a problem with a promissory note that says it's not dischargeable in bankruptcy. That will keep it from being dischargeable.
Mr. Albright, does that satisfy your?
Even if it's not dischargeable in bankruptcy, there still would be possible collection issues, um, but-
Now, you can't get blood from a stone, as they say.
Exactly, so under the circumstances, short of requiring any type of performance bond or guarantee, this seems to be the most appropriate resolution.
All right.
Chair, I would just add to that, the cost be left at $500 per tree.
Grandfather didn't, $500 a tree, regardless of where the prices go?
Yes.
So you'd sign a promissory note, you would state that it's not dischargeable, even though it, it could be whatever. You would get five trees by the 24 planting season, plus the two in the front of the building, and then you would have three years after that to plant the remaining fif-, uh, thirteen trees. No. Fifteen trees. Fifteen trees.
Fifteen, so the twenty is flat, they have to-
And just a, a note, we did put a hard stop at 9:30, as much as I love the discussion of trees. Please.
If I could ask administration, uh, maybe Mr. Kraus, uh, we say by the planting season, but you would actually have to have that payment in, ahead of time in order to make plans. So what would be an adequate date to have those, uh, annual payments in?
Yeah, Commissioner, so I'm, uh, just kind of basing this, uh, statement off of my own experiences for this upcoming planting season, and, uh, we are looking to have the trees purchased, I would say, three weeks ahead of the prime planting season towards the end of September. So I would say that that's a, that's an adequate amount of time that's needed for payment to also then apply that to, uh, the trees that are being selected, and then also the, the, um, the selection at the tree nursery, and then also having those delivered to the city.
So when is the spring planting season begin?
There isn't-
Uh, the fall planting season.
I'm sorry, you-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would September 1st be-
Yeah, final week in September. I would actually say is, for the planting seat, for the planting to begin, and I would say early September would be realistic in terms of, uh, payment for the trees.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so the payment in by September 1st, does that sound?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, do, are, do we have an agreement now?
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the proposed motion for, uh, site plan approval?
Yes, please.
Are you going to include your, uh?
Yes. Okay, the motion to approve is as follows. The motion to approve the site plan for an assembly hall at 24611 Grashit, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated July 27, 2023, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter dated March 9, 2023, within three months of planning commission approval, and based on the fact that the site plan is generally in compliance with the ordinance. Listed below is the information needed for site plan conditional approval and waivers. Number one, copy of the special land use conditions of approval in place as a note on the site plan indicate that the applicant acknowledges and agrees with the conditions. Number two, revised note on occupancy language, language to say, quote, occupancy not to exceed 99 people without fire suppression system. If new system is installed, occupancy will be set at the number provided by the fire and planning departments, depending on fire code and off-street parking requirements, unquote. Off-street parking requirements for parking lots with 62 spaces allow for 186 occupants. Number three, provide a note with new deciduous and ornamental landscaping planning timeline. Number four, provide a note in the site plan that applicant will trim the existing west-side parking lot trees hanging over the site's property. Number five, provide a note indicating that the applicant will improve the parking lot conditions as required or recommended by the applicant's or city's engineer. Number six, provide information and meet ordinance requirements for maximum average site illumination and wall lighting fixtures height. Additionally, the planning commission grants the following waivers. Number one, grant a waiver for off-street parking to be regulated by occupancy, not usable floor area based on urban planning best practices. And number two, grant waiver to reduce tree planting requirements due to the insufficient room at the site. Per the ordinance, the applicant is required to plant 22 trees. We recommend planting two trees, one ornamental, and one deciduous tree. The planning commission consider requiring the applicant to make a payment in lieu of landscaping. In this case, the recommendation is as follows. Five trees to be planted by the 2024 planting season, with the remaining 15 required trees planted over the course of three years. Annual payments will be received by September 1st, and also the applicant will sign or execute a promissory note, uh, which is not to be discharged in bankruptcy. The amount per tree shall have an amount, as set by city council, uh, of $500 per tree.
Do we have anyone willing to make the motion of what Mr. Albright just said?
I make a motion, I make a motion to accept what Mr. Albright just said.
Do we have support?
I was just about to say what he said, but I'll support that motion.
We are, so we're gonna open this for any, any commissioner discussion on this?
Uh, the remaining three years, will the 9-1 date be the, the date moving forward for the-
Yes.
Always, okay.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments on this? Seeing none, secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Lubeck?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. It's all on city council now.
Thank you so very much for your time and everything.
Please don't have my friends on Bell stab me for this.
Leon, say something to them, they're so quiet.
Mr. Kraus?
Tell them. The one thing is, will, will the notes-
I'll do my best.
Will the notes be stricken that say that they had all these crimes when they weren't even open in 2017 and '18?
You're not gonna have any crimes, so there's not gonna be any police record.
Right, but that's not gonna go to city council, that inaccurate rendition that's in the consultant's, um, report twice. I mean, the first time you said it would be acknowledged, stricken, but it's still in there.
I can't speak for city council, but I would say that they're probably gonna take what we discussed here and move forward with it, and what they do with it is, is up to them.
They're gonna watch the tape?
I, I doubt, probably, councilperson DeMonico's the only one that pays any attention to this, so the rest of them probably don't.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kraus, congratulations on your 20 trees.
All right.
Say thank you.
Moving on to the second hearing of the public. Does anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to be heard? Last call. Anybody wish to be heard for the hearing of the public? Seeing none, it's closed. May I get a motion to table training?
Chairman DeHunt, being that we are closing in on our hard stop, I would like to make a motion to postpone training until our September meeting.
We have motion of support. Ms. Smith, can we, I would ask, on the quarterly report, can the planning department email that to everybody, and I would actually like that sent to city council as well, in case they want to know what we're doing.
Will do.
All right.
I made a motion, was it-
I think Leo, support. We have motion of support.
Mr. Lubeck?
Yes.
Mr. Laland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Moving on to commissioner comments, we shall start with Ms. Smith, who's been sacrificed because somebody went to Europe.
Yes. Um, I do appreciate, uh, the commissioners being very thorough in the review and giving thoughtful consideration in the last couple of months. You've been presented with a lot of site plans and special land use, and, um, yeah, I just appreciate all the thought and consideration you've given. And also, I get married next weekend, so I will, and I'm changing my last name, so I will be Mrs. Wolf the next time you see me.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Thank you.
What was that name?
Wolf.
Wolf.
Okay, it's, it's, it's not, not some long Polish name.
No. No. Yes, with Smith to Wolf. I actually lost one letter, so making it easier.
All right, thank you.
So there's no E on the end of that?
No E.
That's unacceptable in a city that's name that begins and ends with an E.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Fire marshal. Mr. McCain?
Uh, good evening, commission. Um, so I'm sorry I missed you at the last meeting. Um, I don't normally do this, but I decided to take some time off, because it was my thirtieth birthday on the day of the meeting, so, um, not as exciting as a wedding, but still a milestone nonetheless. Um, we have some exciting projects in the works for you, so stay tuned. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is we had a very successful second, uh, summer concert last Thursday, uh, just behind city hall with the Shamrock Jazz Orchestra. We had a really good turnout, a good time was had by all, and our next one is gonna be on August 24th, and it'll be Larry Lee and the Back in the Day Band. So, um, whether you joined us, uh, last time or not, uh, please come out and join us for August and, um, September as well, so, um, and then the last thing is, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Hol- no?
Notcha.
Oh, okay. Never mind, okay, it looked like she was waiting, so, okay, turn it over to-
I see the fire chief over there. Nothing tonight, sir. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Ms., uh, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to thank, uh, Ms. Smith, soon to be, or known as Ms. Wolf and Mara, because they did spend a lot, a lot of time on the, uh, site plan for the Grashit, uh, event hall, nor, a lot more than normal. With that, I think I've exceeded my word allotment for the evening, Mr. Chairman, so-
You burned your retainer.
To, uh, Commissioner Laland.
Nah, we're gonna go to Ms. Holman right there.
First, thank you all for how much time you spent on this and, and thought that you spent, so we appreciate that, and then we'll move on to council, hopefully by the 15th. Um, but mostly, I just wanted to introduce John Kraus. He is our, uh, CDAM Fellow, Community Economic Development Associations of Michigan, uh, fellow. He is here with us for the next year and a half. He is, um, working with, very closely with Ian, um, but he has some of his own projects. I know he's talked to Mr. Lubeck, but I wanted him to give just a quick, couple minutes on some of the projects he's working on, uh, for the city.
Yeah, first off, I just want to say that the tree advocacy this evening was enjoyable for me to hear. Um, I know that it was a challenge to be able to get to, um, an outcome that, you know, everybody can be in agreeance with, but, um, I'm, I'm actually very humbled to be able to, to see 20 more trees added to the city of East Point. Um, I think it's gonna be, you know, the first success of many, um, in, in the work that, that's being done to improve tree canopy in East Point, but, um, also too, my, my wife gave me approval to attend this meeting this evening. She's actually, I'm gonna be having a baby in the next two weeks. Um, so, yeah, this is a, a rare occurrence for me to be able to, to attend, um, but, uh, hopefully, I'll be able to attend more once-
What's the due date?
Uh, August 19th, yeah.
My grandbabies due the 17th.
Oh, really?
Yes!
Okay, nice. Yeah. Okay, nice. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm really focusing on a lot of climate resilient C projects in the city of East Point, one being the tree canopy improvement initiative from a residential and commercial perspective. So that education component, as we saw, you know, tonight, is, is critical to getting that, that level of, of support generated to get more trees in East Point. And then also, stormwater infrastructure along Nine Mile is a major priority, especially with us kind of approaching the, the first phase completion. That is an area of focus that I really want to assemble a team within, within both the economic development department, but also the, the urban planning department to try and do it in a way that is aesthetically pleasing, but also will result in a more sustainable streetscape infrastructure for, for East Point. And then, yeah, I don't wanna talk your guys' ear off, but yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of projects along the lines of sustainability that I'm, that I'm currently focusing on, but all exciting things.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Councilman DeMonico?
Let's see if I got this. Welcome, John, and congrats in a couple weeks here.
Thank you.
And then happy birthday, and congrats also, Brigitte, to you and Trent. That's exciting. Let's see, so then I just, I'll make it as quick as possible, because I guess we did have lengthy comments all together here. Just one item, and I brought most of this up at the council meeting, but wanted to bring it up now because you guys have spent a lot of time also on the Nine Mile strategic corridor plan. I brought up some concerns that I thought we might not hit some of the objectives that we put in the plan, and I guess I'd just like to hear some feedback from everybody. Some things we talked about at the council meeting, and it sounds like we're definitely going to have to discuss again, is that there's parking that'll be removed for businesses, and some that seem to not really have other parking. We're definitely gonna have to figure that out, but I could explain more, not in like two minutes right now. Yeah, and it doesn't, we don't even go down that far yet. From Grashit to Tuscany, and then we're removing, unfortunately, I know we talked about plus twenty trees, but there's negative fourteen trees right now in the first chunk of Nine Mile. And I know we, we talked about at the council meeting about adding them, but they're not in the current plans, and I just was concerned if they're not, might not end up planting them. So I think we'll talk a little bit more about that, but then, just to keep it, you know, short right now, just there's some concerns like that. So if anybody on the commission's interested in talking about that, I'd be happy to hear from you, and we could talk a little more. But, yeah, that is it. Congrats to everybody in the city, and welcome and everything. Lots of good stuff going on. Congrats to your grandbaby also, Sheila, in a couple weeks here. And that's all I had.
Mr. Leland?
I have nothing.
Ms. Moody?
I have nothing. Everyone just have a wonderful evening.
Grandma?
It's Bousha. Just so you know, it's Bousha. So, and real quick, so we don't know what it is, and there's no boys' names picked out. I say we like I'm involved in this. So my son did pick out a name, and it's for a girl, and he liked, and I thought this was a joke, Octavia Scarlett Yulinski, so her initials would be?
Don't even.
O-S-U! I'm a Buckeye, for those of you who don't know.
Useless poisonous nut.
But anyway, I want to welcome John, and there was a lot going on tonight, and I'm always grateful for my commissioners that we can still throw in our fun and discuss and come up with solutions. Brigitte, thank you for everything you and Mara did. Kim, this was a tough one. Grateful for all the work that was done. And Rich, thank you for adding your lovely voice tonight. We know if we need voiceovers, we have you to fall back on. Always good. Congrats, Brigitte. Can't wait to see pictures. Have a wonderful, wonderful time. And that's all I've got.
Mr. Lubak?
Oh, where do I begin this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Kraus. It's a pleasure to finally get to meet you after an exchange of several emails. Brigitte, thank you for being here, and congratulations. I would try to say something, but it would be misunderstood, and I'd have to spend twenty minutes trying to explain it. Speaking of grandchildren, I want to wish a happy fifth birthday to my grandson. That was yesterday, five years ago, and I can tell you where grandpa was on that day. Sitting right there on that floor, having one of the early discussions about medical The amazing thing when I think about five years is we were pushed and pushed and pushed as to time was of the essence. Looking forward now, five years, we still don't have any medical marijuana facilities in the city. So is time of the essence or not? I guess you can be your own judge. Other than that, everybody have a great day, great weekend, and see you next month.
Congratulations, Grandma. And if John, whatever, I'm not Polish. So here's my thinking, if you have O-S-U and John has a little boy, they can play dates? Yeah? Yeah? See?
I'll have you know that for the shower, though, I was kind. I got a onesie that said daddy's little Ohio State fan. But I did buy two sets of booties, and I made the left one Ohio State and the right one Michigan.
It's nice that you're so Democratic.
I'm glad you got the right one right.
Now, would you know? No, left side, strong side.
Uh huh. So I just want to comment and pray that nobody of my, none of my friends on Bell hit me with a car or something. It was not an easy decision, and it boiled down to one thing, I had to have faith that he was gonna follow through. And now the onus is on the city to make sure that the follow-through is there, lest I do get stabbed if something happens. I got hacked this week. And all, and not Facebook hacking, just all sorts of craziness. So protect your stuff, protect your information, take, take precautions. It's, it's a crazy world out there. So that's all I got. We're ten minutes past. I apologize. Can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
We have motion. Do we have support? We have motion of support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Lubak?
Yes.
Mrs. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Leland?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
Thank you. (laughter)